Meeting order, please. Sergeant, would you lead us in pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us some prayer tonight?
Yes. Father God, we come before you tonight in the mighty name of Jesus, God. We're asking for your direction tonight, Lord. We ask for your guidance. Lord, we ask that your will will be done here in this chamber tonight, God. We also lift up Counselor Johnson, Lord, and wherever he's at right now, Lord, whether he's in his room or in some special testing room, God, we ask, Lord, that you will have your perfect will with him. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
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 We'll call Nita.
Counselor Foster?
Present.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Johnson will not be present this evening, but a quorum is declared.
Modifications to agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple modifications to the agenda. I'd like to remove N two and N three.
I have a modification that would go under Section L, contracts, agreements, and leases. I'm uh I move that we instruct staff to review the lease and have a discussion regarding to review the lease for the Chamber of Commerce and have a discussion regarding that lease, and then we can go from there.
Correct.
I would move to approve these modifications to the agenda.
Second. A motion, motion and second to modifications to the agenda to, on the contracts agreements, the chamber lease, and then remove the city attorney report and the city clerk report. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Rock?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the modifications.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda and the minutes of regular meeting, April first, twenty twenty-one, review and approval of counts payable.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, April first, twenty twenty-one, and review and approval of counts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Looks like we're moving right into citizen comments and special presentations, presentations, scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate form with City Clerk in the later afternoon on Monday prior to the meeting. First up, Montevista Chamber update, Brenna Ribley.
Hi, my name is Brenna Ribley. As most of you, uh, a few of you would know me, I'm Jody Ribley's daughter. But I wanted to come and introduce myself as the new, um, Chamber of Commerce, say it's Chamber Manager. Um, and I just wanted to kind of put a face to the Chamber of, as me. Um, I would like to start coming monthly, just to kind of give an update of what I'm doing in the Chamber. Um, and so the past, I started in January and I was, um, promoted to Chamber Manager, um, but in February, I started February fif- fifteenth as the Chamber Manager, I was Assistant Chamber Manager when I was hired. And then, so I got to be a part of the ad conference, the Southern Rocky Mountain Ad Conference and Trade Show, which was at the beginning of February. I got to, I was, I was at the last leg of that, and I got to see that happen, which was, um, really cool. It was really scaled back. I've been to it before, just as a kid, but it was really scaled back this year, but really it was just kind of to keep the dates in mind of vendors for next year and kind of, um, kind of keep that slot of that first week of February will be for the ad conference, and I, um, I wasn't a part of the virtual part, but I know that they had quite a few successes as well, because they had online classes. And then I put on the Crane Craft Fair in, um, March nineteenth and twentieth. I had twenty-five vendors and then we had quite a few people come through out those two days, which was really cool. Um, the Crane Festival itself was virtual, so we wanted to do something in person for the vendors, just because a lot of them didn't want to do anything virtual, so, um, we put on, we put it in the McMullen Building, which was, uh, I think it was a success, but it was my first one. I forgot to get a porta potty, so I had to, the day before everything happened, I had to call and try to find a porta potty, and there was a few mishaps, but I'm, was the learning, is my learning curve. And then we were putting on the Home and Garden, April thirtieth and May first. Um, and vendors are still allowed to sign up until tomorrow, actually, but, um, and then hopefully you'll start to see flyers and hear on the radio advertising to go and see the Home and Garden. We have quite a few vendors already, so, yes, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself.
Awesome.
Have you had, uh, for the Home and Garden, have people been signing up?
Yeah, I have currently sixteen vendors.
And it's April thirtieth, May first?
April thirtieth, May first, from nine to four thirty PM, and we're doing it in the McMullen Building, so in the fair, um, barn.
So what kind of vendors are you looking for, what do they typically bring in?
So, um, it's home, garden, and outdoor living, so I have some of my, we have a few crafters who are doing it, so, and then we have a chili, her name is Linda's Chili Connection. She has chilies and spices. We have another spice lady, um, the polished edge will have one, and so it, um, we, hopefully we'll have a A and M windows, um, to just kind of like, so we have construction and home improvements, as well as like just any kind of craft or whatever.
Cool. Awesome.
Do you have anything else planned? And I know it's asking further out, because there's a lot of changes going on, but.
Right, right. Currently, no, the Home and Garden will be our last event for a while.
So how many vendors are you guys going to allow in the Mullen Building?
So with social distancing, we can allow up to fifty. That also depends on where the construction stuff is as well, because they often have stuff laying in there.
Awesome.
Cool.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on change in tourism funding. Who's in charge of that? I just have that, no names.
Well, I think that's Counselor Locke, mayor.
I can, I can start that.
Okay.
Um, we approved in January a specific marketing plan and sent a check to the Montevista Chamber of Commerce to be executed on that plan at that time. There have been several hurdles to go over, several things to be approved. All of the money belonged to the city at the time and still does, um, because that was money that was given to the city for that. Um, there seems to have been some sort of, I'm, I'm really not sure what or why. But the tourism money has, has not been released. Um, now, part of that is because of the blaspheming, the tourism marketing people, the people that came up with the plan that we approved, did ask for fourteen days. But I believe that would be because there were s- conditions put on it that the city didn't put on it. Um, there were, it, it just became very, much more convoluted than it should have been. As a result, we have missed, uh, we now have late fees on the website that was to be purchased. Uh, the website could have been up and running, but we have before spring break, or we blew spring break, for having any of that on there. You have a transcript of part of the last chamber meeting that I, that I, that I attended. All of, all of you have that. Um, I'll be glad to answer any questions. We have, we have several chamber members here that can answer questions. The bottom line is, is the, the city was given money from Rio Grande Tourism. The city approved a plan that did not get carried out.
The, those funds were, um, awarded to the Optimistix.
No, they were awarded specifically for the tourism, for the tourism marketing plan that, uh, Adam Locke, Ken Hemco, Kyle Rigenbaugh, and Chelsea Martinez put together and presented to us. It's a sixty-page, I think, I think it was a sixty-page plan. It was very detailed. It covered all of the Rio Grande Tourism requirements.
That was how long ago now? Almost two months?
Was that the first or second council meeting in January?
January twenty-first.
January twenty-first.
Uh, how quick does the funds usually go through to get where they need to go? Like, is it, does it take like, typically is it awarded in a way, or does it take a week or two?
Well, since the city approved it, and it was the city's authority to do that, then as soon as the city check was written, that is when the fund should have been dispersed. That's when the website should have been purchased and all the, a- all the things that went with the marketing plan. I did not do the marketing plan, or I would be able to speak more detailed on that, but we did see the marketing plan and we did approve it. So the city sent the money to the Chamber, and then it got tied up in a lot of things that I don't think it should have gotten tied up into.
Is there any explanation of why it's tied up? Anybody can explain that? Or where that, where the funds are, like, why they haven't been dispersed to that fund, or?
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
Uh, we received the funds on February eighteenth.
Hey, Gary, you want to come up here, so they can hear you?
The funds were received on February eighteenth by the Chamber. In the interim, the Tourism Board had, before all the, the money was distributed from the Tourism Board to the city, so like the, the city of Montevista, that money that they had, that comes from tourism. It's a tax type of fund, and so there are certain criteria. So it's actually not city money. It's money, it's tourism money that went through the city. So what it done before is it went to the South Fork X amount, uh, Montevista X amount, Del Norte X amount. And so I, if I remember correctly, there was eleven thousand dollars or somewhere around that left from the previous amount, and that's where the eight thousand dollars came from. In the interim, the Tourism Board had changed their, their, uh, distribution process, so there is a marketing committee, or whatever they call it in South Fork, which was developed over a four or five-year period, and rather than the town of South Fork, it's going to the Marketing Committee. Del Norte, um, doesn't have anything in place, and so it's just still going to the city of Del Norte. The Tourism Board had decided that they would disperse that, because most of it's being used, to the Montevista Chamber of Commerce. And I'm not a member of the Tourism Board or whatever, so based on that, we have to have a separate account, so we have designated one of our accounts, it's a sunflower account, so that all of the funds that come from tourism, because they're about to release the, the amount from this year's amount, uh, have to be separate. They can't be commingled with general funds. And so we've done that, so that we have, you know, there and there. We have three hundred dollars in there that will be non-tourism, because it is uh, also used for like our, um, is it?
Raffle.
Raffle license, so we have to have a certain amount that we have to take out and put in to maintain whatever for, for Sunflower Bank, but, and it's che- treated separately. So the Tourism Board, they have a process that has to be gone through. And so with the Tourism Board's permission, we modified that process for the Chamber, so their application fund and all of those kinds of things, because what it's designed for is matching funding. So for example, let's say that the Crane Fest advertising outside of the valley and those kinds of things as a supplement to help that to bring tourism into the valley. Basically, if I remember, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, those that are familiar with the tourism, uh, it's like a, you have to have a twenty percent matching before you can start the process. And then there's, the process is like twenty percent upfront, thirty-five percent a certain amount, and as we go through. So to that end, the Chamber set up a committee that would be a, our tourism committee. And that committee consists of the Chamber Manager, the Chamber President, Gus is on that. Uh, we have Rob Vance is on that, and Gene Glover, the, the County Commissioners, so that it wasn't anything in. And so we set up this process, because we want to make sure that those funds are used properly. From my understanding, the Tourism Board also put in the criteria that if it's not used properly, that whatever entity would have to refund. That's just new this year. That wouldn't apply to the eleven thousand before. So for example, we even talked about Home and Garden just now. There have been some monies that have been used for things like the Home and Garden as tourism, and you're advertising outside, but it truly is not tourism. Crane Fest is, you know, a- any number of things. So we wanted to have this process in place. We felt that we need to start this process immediately. It was not designed to hold anything up, as the case may be, um, but to go through that, and I am, again, not on that committee, and the committee decided that they were looking at that and they had some questions, because this is tourism money, regardless of whether it's last year's or this year's, and we want to make sure that it's used properly. So the question is, you know, the upfront and all of those things. I know the city authorized and all of those, those things, and we're not trying to get it run in, in the way of that. It was approved by the council. We had instructed our bookkeeper, our free bookkeeper, to write the check. And then the fourteen-day request was, was that. Now, as to the additional criteria that was left in, it was asked for a monthly report. We have monthly reports from everything. We have a monthly report from Rob Vance from the city. We have a monthly report from every committee that we have. We have a monthly report from the school, so that we stay informed and we know what's going on. Because this site is a tremendous idea. Linda and I sat on the beginning of the marketing, and very honestly, with the friends, we spent huge amounts of time. We were just at Alamosa County Commissioners yesterday, and so we stepped back from the community. But, you know, we would like to see that there's an agricultural pers- piece to that, but anything in a marketing is going to take development, it's going to take time. It will take, you know, to get it rolling and in action, one would suspect two to three years for full effectiveness. But regardless of that, we are not trying to get in the way of that. We just want to be able to, as a chamber, since it was built as a Montevista Chamber of Marketing, and it is a marketing committee as part of the Chamber, so that we have information, we can get way in from all of our members, so that we can get as many ideas as possible. I would encourage and hope that the city would monitor it, uh, and everybody involved, so that we do the best. You know, a marketing plan can be good, or it can be bad, depending on what it's doing, and we all love this community, and we want to make sure that that there's transparencies, and we're going in the right direction, and get everybody's ideas involved. So there was no intent to get into the way of anything, and it has been authorized. The holdup at this point is not the Montevista Chamber of Commerce.
Is the, you said there were some questions that, that?
That committee wanted to meet with the, the, uh, the marketing group, because, again, back to this committee, let's say that next year, next year for the Crane Festival, the Crane Festival Committee, whether it's a chamber committee, or whether it's outside or whatever, we're going to go through the same process, so that it's transparent, it's consistent, and people can't say, well, this is the Chamber, so you just use the money however the heck you want. You don't have to go through a process. I mean, for instance, even when the, when the Jeep Rescue, and they were mentioning this, uh, you know, wanting to do, like, they do in Moab, and have a Jeep event, that is a perfect use of things like this, and we hope to reach out to them and say, let's get an application, you know, so that we can, we can get an event like that here to Montevista. That's, that's a perfect use of things. We are hoping that as a Chamber of Commerce, we will have a little bit of, uh, power, whatever. We can spread the word a little bit more, because a lot of people that are around here, they don't know that that money exists. And we want to be able to use it as wisely to help this community as much as possible. And this website can be a huge, huge resource. But we have to have a way in. If you and I did a website, and I know you, you know me, and we have fully wonderful intentions, and we're not getting input, and we're not getting way in, and we're, is it going to be as, as good as it could be? In my mind, no. And I am particularly sensitive to use of tax dollars. As School Board President, of course, we got all the tax dollars. And you need to have accountability for everything in there, and we don't want anybody to say, okay, well, yeah, you threw up whatever it happens to be in this event, and you didn't have a process to make sure that things are done as well as possible in this community. It's not a question of anybody. It's doing the best. Accountability and transparency and collaboration is the way things get done. If that were not true, that building wouldn't be going on out there.
I think the question lies in, in, well, not a question, but the fact of the matter is, when the tourism money, the tourism money that was requested from the city was tourism money that the Rio Grande Tourism Board gave to the city the previous year before these changes came about.
Correct.
Therefore, at that point, at that point, those dollars, the city had authority over. A presentation was made. It was not as complete as we'd like it to be, so we asked for more. And they came back with more, and we approved it. And if I'm not mistaken, the Chamber was happy with it too. So at that point, we went through the checks and balances. We, we listened to this, to this, um, presentation. We knew exactly where the website was coming from. We knew exactly where every single dollar was going. We simply ran it through the Chamber, and, and that, and that's, that's really, in my opinion, a- again, I understand the rules have changed, so this coming year that they will be different, but for those dollars, the rules were, the city had the, had the authority over it. We voted for it. We approved it. It needed to be implemented, and the Chamber of Commerce did not do that. And you even mentioned that, you know, that, talking about the Home and Garden, that, that, that's just for this year, didn't apply before. Well, the money that the city gave you didn't apply, that, that's just, that didn't apply to these new rules under this year.
The only new rule is that if it's not used properly, you have to come back. Every time that we've utilized any of those things, we have to go through Forrest, and we have to do a report on how it was used. It has to be detailed and all those things, and it can't be, it can't be an upfront type thing. It has to be a supplement. And then that same report has to go to the tourism also, because the city is responsible to the Tourism Board for those fundings, and that's why you use the reports, right? So it is not city money, and it's tourism, so the rules of the game have not changed at all. And we're just nervous that if we don't have all of our boxes checked, that we will not be able to utilize that other money, so it's, it's, it's a process. And Forrest knows more about the things, but I know that we have to give reports to him on, and we have to do applications, and we have to do reports to him, and they have to fit the criteria that the Tourism Board has. And, uh, I don't know, what is the percentage? The total percentage of a project that can be?
For, uh, Montevista, for what?
Yeah, you can, it, no, for a project, isn't it?
If there isn't, there is so much of.
You have to have a twenty percent matching of things, so, so that piece, it doesn't meet the criteria, um, I don't, I'm not on the Tourism Board, I don't know if that will be, but that was the whole, so, so the only thing that's changed is the, the back. The process has been around for quite a while in terms of justification, and how did you use the money, and all of those things.
And, and, and if it were money that had been awarded to the Chamber, that would be understandable, but it was money that, that was awarded to the city. As far as the, uh, fourteen business days, I, I do, I, I have a transcript of the, of the last meeting. Um, there was a fourteen-day, um, they did ask, the Tourism Marketing Committee did ask for fourteen days. In that fourteen days, they also sent a list of questions. I have not seen the questions, but I don't believe they've been answered. I don't believe any, anything.
My suggestion would be that the city take the money back, and you will oversee that, because the tourism money from here on will have a net present, so that you could take over those things, because we don't want a conflict.
What do you think, Forrest, with me?
Well, so this one tranche of money that the city received, because the short history of Rio Grande County Tourism Board, if you will, uh, a couple of years ago, there was, uh, South Fork became very activist, and that they felt they, that they should get every penny that was earned in their district, whether it was within their city limits or not, and they went to the County Commissioners. Now, previously, the, the Tourism Board allocated money exactly the same way if you look at their, um, application for lodging tax grants that they have on their website. That's the way that they were administered. Um, and then the county said, okay, okay, South Fork, we, we give in kind of, and they gave South Fork X amount of dollars, and they gave us nineteen thousand five hundred, or whatever the total was, roughly. Um, and they gave us a set of instructions from the county of how we had to administer those funds. And, um, as the person that administered them, we took an application in front of the city council from, um, the Chamber of Commerce for sixteen thousand dollars. We didn't pay a penny of it, except upon reimbursement. And the way that we did that, and that was my doing, if you will, but because we were required by the county to have detailed reports of what the expenditures are for, and the tourism, um, oh, sorry, the Chamber basically was doing an advertising campaign with the newspapers primarily and radio, and so Jerry Atker administered that and gave the city a report for everything that was spent, where the ad was placed, how much it was. They had, you know, receipts and everything, and then they would send us a request for payment, and we would then cut them a check. and then they would send us a request for payment and we would then cut them a check. And the way, the reason we did it that way was so that we could be in, in compliance with the way the county instructed us. They're like, these are still tourism funds and you have to follow these rules because it's from lodging tax, right? So that's the way the city did it with the chamber. In the past, we did not give them, um, you know, carte blanche check and say, okay. In this case, there was a presentation made and the city council approved the use of funds for that. Um, but there's still a question of remembering that this is just like the onesent tax funds that our voters approved for three purposes in the city. And we set up separate funds for those, um, that you all approved in budgets, that we have an oversight committee for, which much like there's a subcommittee of the chamber to oversee. And everything that we spend on that is highly detailed, reportable back to the citizens on an annual basis and the oversight committee will be saying, this is what we spent the money on. That's kind of the same level that, um, the county tourism has asked for. And, you know, on county tourism, for, and I don't know if this has changed, Linda, but with projects over twenty-five hundred, um, they only pay out, you know, twenty-five percent, um, for initial payment, thirty percent for the projects, fifty percent complete, thirty-five percent of the project is seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent complete. And then they keep ten percent as routineage till the project is finally complete and there's a final report issued. And that's the way tourism works. Now, those are kind of daunting and I would say historically that prevented some folks from applying for tourism funds for the county. There's always been, you know, not, the, the tourism fund had a balance, this is why the county commissioners did that, but they gave the city the same kind of guidance on how it could be allocated. So I don't know all the inter workings between everything that's going on here, but, you know, there has to be a certain level of transparency reporting because we gave tourism money to the Chamber of Commerce, um, there needs to be compliance of some sort. And I'm not speaking to every individual thing, but they're gonna have to report back to us about this, but I'm concerned that the county goes, so what did you spend your tourism money on? This is what we spent it on. And it does have to comply with, you know, it's a lodging tax and I'm not an expert on that except it's regulated by state law on what you can use it for and how it's used. So I can say our only experience with it is what we did with the chamber before that I managed and, you know, that was strictly reimbursement. We didn't provide any upfront capital for that, which they agreed to because we're like, as you, we simply pay as you go, you place this many ads, you give us a report, we look at the report, we will be able to cut you a check. So that is the process we followed in the past and this is divergent from it, but we're still accountable for the compliance on these tourism funds as well.
He did just offer just to give it back to the city.
Well, that's a discussion for you all as a city council. And I would just say as your chief operating officer, if that money comes back and you wanna give it to another group, we're gonna have to make sure that we're compliant. I'm just saying because ultimately the county auditor, you know, the county does get audited annually, the auditor come down and say, what did you guys do with this money? And this is what we did, here's, here's the, the reporting. Just like we do with, you know, everything else the city does when it handles money. So, um, that is totally a discussion for the council to decide. You know, if you assign that back to staff, we would quickly try to formulate what we needed for compliance and we did do that. That's your call.
Does anybody have copies of the compliances? Like for the tourism board to what you guys have? Is there copies of that?
We can email it to you.
Sure.
And I can send you all the link if you wanna read what, uh, Rio Grande County Tourism, uh, I have that up right here, I'll just email you all the link right now.
So, just kind of curious, uh, because some, somebody did mention there was already late fees that were applied to something?
There are, there are already late fees because the website wasn't purchased when we approved for it to be purchased.
Excuse me, I talked to Becky Dixon who is, who there, you know, that's the person that's selling the website and I just talked to her Tuesday and I had talked to her before to tell her that we were guaranteeing that payment for that website, but we were having, because it's a new way to, how we're handling tourism monies, uh, at the chamber. It was going to be late, but I guarantee that payment. And then on Tuesday, when I spoke to her, uh, during the tourism board meeting, I, um, apologized about, you know, that we were still working on it. And then I asked about the late fees and she told me that there were never late fees. As far as she was concerned, it was on hold and she would wait until a final decision was made, but no late fees were ever, uh, added to that amount.
Okay, so I'm just kind of curious if... How, how quickly can those funds be dispersed from the chamber to, to have that done?
Because this is a new committee and I know it took us a little longer. We have, um, actually four of the, um, committees who reviewed the applications, they have a full-time job. And so we had decided at that last, the meeting that was, when the money was, uh, approved, that we would only take fourteen days.
What are you talking about, like right now?
Yeah, like how, how...
We could have the checks ready and our bookkeeper could have it done by Monday, probably. I would assume, I guess I'd have to check her schedule, but...
Would that be sufficient for the tourism board? Like to have the funds that quick? If we get it awarded back to the city, how long is that gonna take? Cause I know, you know, the quicker the better, right?
We would be able to have our bookkeeper, uh, make a, you know, make out a check for the amount that we sent to the chamber. And that would be done by Monday and we would hand deliver it.
So e- either way, whether it was refunded back to the city or like awarded to where it needs to go, it would be done by Monday?
Mm-hmm.
And if we get it back, that's gonna take longer than that?
Uh, it would, it would, yeah, cause, so, yes, it would take a little bit longer for me to put together what I thought we needed, I've got some background with what we did before, but, you know, uh...
Then you'd have to clear it with Mike.
Et cetera. So, I mean, it would, it would take a few days for me to certainly, for me to put that together.
Not as quick as Monday, right?
Uh, no.
And who did you say the lady was?
Becky, Becky Dixon, she, uh, owns Mass Footprint. And she also does the, manages the website for the Rio Grande County Tourism.
I would like to hear from the, um, it would be you two, because y'all are the ones that are here tonight, your concerns, your concerns going forward.
I'm blocking part of the marketing committee. I think the biggest concern are, are the unanswered questions right now. I understand and have no problem with the compliance to city, uh, chamber, county, I understand all of that and it makes perfect sense. The, the biggest question and concern we have is moving forward as far as the website itself and the social media marketing. We honestly felt kind of like our hands were tied i- i- in, ever since the money came in. Where do we go from here? This is really what we wanna know is the marketing group. How much latitude are we gonna have or do we have to come back to the chamber every time we want to make a change? We, we don't see that as palatable, that we, we can't do that, but this is why we put the questions forth because we, we want to have a dialogue, you know? Where do we go from here? We love our town, we love our chamber, honestly, we wanna see all of this flourish, we like the marketing concept, we spent an inordinate amount of time on it, uh, because we believe in it and, and we think, you know, like Gary said, it, it can help move our tourism forward, you know, move our town forward, uh, increase the visibility, and that, that's really the whole gist of it, is increase the visibility of the town, create this, uh, wonderful atmosphere on the internet, social media marketing, as far as, it's good people here, it's what we want, you know, people downtown, we want our businesses to flourish. But how do we move forward? This, this is where I think where we stand right now and I've been waiting, hoping to get answers to, to these questions because that's really what we wanna know is the marketing group, if we wanna continue to move forward with this, it's, you know, we have a core group, there's four of us who really are involved in it and we all understand marketing from various aspects, you know, Ken is a completely different aspect than I do. But together, and Chelsea Martinez still wants to be a part of it, Kyle's a part of it, we all have our strengths that we pull together as a group to move it forward. Are we gonna need to come to the chamber every month and go, okay, well, this is what we wanna do, this is where we, or not? That, that's, it's really kind of where, so, you know, it moves at the speed of light and, and we all know this, I mean, you all know what I do for a living and we've gotta be very, very reactive, very quick sometimes to things. If there's an event coming up in two weeks, and, and this is happening a lot, you see right now, all of a sudden events popping up across social media, things starting to pop and happen, thank goodness we're opening up again as a society. But if the event is, you know, we find out in about it, say, uh, May first and it's May fifteenth and our chamber meeting isn't until May, the last, you know, week of May, can we go ahead and make these kind of simple changes or not? I get the overall picture and, and as we discussed in our last meeting, we want the chamber's input, we want the city's input, we want everybody's feedback, uh, because together as a group, we're gonna make it even better. But can we, as the small group, make these minor changes that are needed and continue to move forward on a day-to-day basis or not? And that's really kind of where I, to me, where it stands. Do you have anything to add to that, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Please do.
May I ask, may I ask a question before you change?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. When did you send this list of questions to the chamber?
I would have to look, I don't have a date off the top of my head.
Okay, but it was at least, can you give me just a basis?
Next, it was the following week after the last chamber meeting.
Following week, so it was following week after the last Thursday of last month?
It was at the end of the month.
End of the month, the last meeting, so...
Okay, so around, what?
It was a few days after that.
So around two weeks ago? Two, two plus weeks ago? Have you gotten any answers from that?
I have not, well, you sent me the question too.
Okay, so, so, so there's not been cooperation?
So the, it was sent April seventh.
April seventh, thank you.
The listed questions were sent April seventh, so it's...
It was a week.
Not quite two weeks.
Okay, so, not quite two weeks. Been, what, twelve, twelve days? So, two days short of two weeks. In twelve days, you've not gotten any answers at all?
No.
Okay.
But let me, um, let me try to rationalize the whole thing, kind of, you know, whatever in, the way I'm looking at it. So, the marketing committee is an entity of the chamber. At the first time that we met and put this marketing plan together, both Linda and Gary were on the committee. Due to their duties and responsibilities, they backed off of the committee, but the marketing committee is a part of the chamber. Well, so, we did our presentation for this money as a chamber committee to city council and you guys sent us away and said, come back, you know, wizard, we'll see you another day. And, uh, we, we, we did another presentation. And in that presentation were specific uses for that, those dollars. Or at least one specific use, which was buying the website, which we would convert into a monovista specific marketing website. Can't be much clearer than that, right? City council approved it, the money was transferred to the chamber. Gets to the chamber, now they, the chamber appoints a committee to oversee the committee, which by the way, in any of the other tourism funds, there was not a committee appointed to oversee the Home and Garden money spent, there was not a committee, um, to oversee the, the agricultural, the ad conference money spent for the tourism money in previous years. So, something changed. The marketing committee became a, uh, I don't know, we, we didn't, we didn't become a part of the chamber, now, now we're being reviewed by the chamber, the money's being held back by the chamber and, and asking the same questions that you all asked us before you approved it. And so all I'm saying is that, you know, it was already approved, we need to move forward, you know, or we don't move forward, we just, we just drop the whole thing and we, we don't move forward on the marketing plan at all. But, um, so there, there's some things, there's some questions on there. Basically it was, so why is the marketing entity of the chamber now being questioned by the, a new committee of the chamber? You know, when we are actually part of the chamber and part of the marketing committee of the chamber? So there's, there's something convoluted there. I would just like to see us move forward. I would just like to see this website be transferred over to us so that we can start marketing tourism in Monovista, you know? I fully understand the two different things, the money approved by the city and we move forward with that and we have accountability. And already you know where it's gonna be spent, already the chamber knows where it's going to be spent. Future money that Gary was talking about, I'm on the board for the Rio Grande Tourism Board, we voted to bring it to the chamber because the chamber can use that money to market, you know, our community. Well, that future money has a different way of being accountable. Just like you guys account, you held us accountable, the council held us accountable for the money that we requested, future money that's allocated to the chamber will have to be accountable. We'll have to report back to Rio Grande County, we'll have to report back to the commissioners how all of it was spent. It's two different things here, you know? Future, if we need money for the website, if the marketing committee of the Chamber of Commerce needs money for the website, we have to go to our board and say, here's what we're doing, here's what money we need and we need to present it, just like we presented to you. So just a question on the new process for the chamber. Um, you said this was the first time that you guys are going through a new process, right? But that money hasn't even been allocated yet. We ju- we just, actually the board, the Rio Grande Tourism Board just voted, you know, last month to allocate that money to the chambers. And so, so it's, it, that, that has changed. That, that wasn't even a change that happened when, when this was made, when this started. So it's, it's, it's really, if I can explain that right, it's really two different things. Gary, you getting ready to say something?
Well, the process hasn't changed, as I said before, we're still accountable for the tourism money, whether it's the city or whatever. Tourism money has never been used for ad conference, any of those things, but we have to, we have to, we'll set this up for all of them. But my question is, where did you get the impression that you had to have everything approved? We, you know, the committee members, they were sending, and, and I talked to Linda, I'm not on that committee, but we don't know where that perception came. It was asked for a monthly report, not on, with, you know, not on tape, you need approval for doing anything. I, I don't think any of us have any idea where you came up with that impression.
Forming a, an additional committee under the chamber...
To oversee...
To oversee a, another committee of the chamber...
No, that's wrong because the committee that was formed was by the five people to review applications. That is...
But this wasn't an application.
Well, but we still, and the reason why we asked you to do that is because we want to have accountability. If we have an audit, then we have a paper trail. But if we don't have any of that, we're gonna have to answer and we're gonna have to show what happened. And so we're just, it's just an accountability. We have all the faith... We have all the faith that you guys, that's why we, you know, we're very supportive. But all we asked was, on a monthly basis, let us know about the, the website. Nothing else was ever said, that you had to come and tell us for every little thing that you were going to do. That was never discussed.
That was the feeling we got.
Well, then that was your feeling, because it wasn't ours.
That, that's what we wanted to clarify, though, and why we wanted to send the questions in. So, so we understand, that's all we wanted, was an understanding of, again, monthly report, five statistics, here's what's happening.
Absolutely, that's, and we, like Gary said, we ask that for every committee.
Right.
I have that in the report every time I send out commitments.
I, I wanna get things back on, on track here, um, because I, I feel, maybe I'm wrong, but. I understand you need to be able to account for money coming in and money going out. This is money coming in with instructions to what to do with it, it should've gone out, just, just gone straight out, there's your explanation to the auditors, nothing more was needed. I'd like to direct the council's attention, page twenty-five in your council packet. This is front, it's an email from Ken Hancock. It seems to be an attempt to work things out, Linda, Adam and I would like to sit down with you and discuss this new direction. The tourism marketing plan, to me, definitely fits the chamber plan to support our local businesses. If we are successful in bringing in more tourism, we are definitely supporting our member businesses. Are you in the office today? Adam and I can come by after two P M. and discuss it with you. In the interest of full disclosure, I'll, I'll read the full, good morning, Ken. The pictures we ordered from the historical side here are in the chamber office, I have no idea what that has to do with anything. But here's the part that does it. Gary and I will no longer be a part of the marketing committee due to this shortage of chamber staff, and all of our efforts to, will be utilized to keep the chamber office open and making sure the chamber's commitments are kept. My understanding of the committee was to create a marketing plan for how our chamber would use the Rio Grande Tourism money to promote our events. It's not to promote events necessarily. Montevista, to promote our events, Montevista, and bring tourism to community. With that said, I can't see where this plan will address the needs of our chamber's goals. So, with that being said, uh, and then on February eighth, this is page twenty-seven, forty-three, and it's from Linda. We have not yet received any money from the city of Montevista in regards to transferring with marketing money to Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, we were not in a position to approve this request at this time, and we'll add it to the agenda for the board meeting for discussion. So, that was sent on April eighth, funds were received by the chamber, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, February eighth, I'm in April, February eighth, and the funds were received by the eighteenth. But what I find, wh- where I think this is pertinent is, is the, especially page twenty-five. It's my understanding, uh, with that said, I can't see where this plan will address the needs of our chamber's goals. Maybe it's just me, but maybe I said, I see the answer, the chamber, the chambers go, this does not, the marketing plan does not address the chamber's goals.
Well, and that.
And, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
No, okay.
No, okay.
And Mr. Wilkinson, Mr. Wilkinson has offered to refund the money. And then, we can move on from there. That, that's just my opinion of that.
So, I understand the chamber is trying to be accountable, I appreciate that very much. I think that's the right thing to do, is to be accountable with what you guys have been entrusted with. I know I'm kinda torn right now, I, I want the, I want the marketing committee to have their money, what I mean, say what they can do, what they need to do, and, um, I just want them to have it as quick as possible, you know, and if Monday is quicker, then let's just try to get it there, but if, but at the same time, I do think there needs to be some resolution between everybody, because I think there's some, either miscommunication or something that's just, we're not all in agreement on it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I don't know how this became, you know, got out of hand. We have always felt like we needed a marketing plan. We were always, um, you know, uh, supportive. And to be honest with you, our goal is to have that. You know, Cannon and Adam are great, that is their forte, and that's what we do at the chamber, we, we, we grasp for what people's strengths are, and that's theirs. You know, that money could've been given to them, you know, way back in March. We're still willing to do that. And I, I really feel like, I think that we do need to sit down and kind of, you know, talk this out. But at no time do we think that, um, that, that they're not important. So, for me, I think that if we can work this out, that's only gonna make the chamber that much better.
So, would this be ideal to have a work session, or how would we do that?
I think that.
Well, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over the chamber.
No, we only have jurisdiction over the money that we, that we gave them. Is that where a city? That was city money.
We're adults, and we know how to communicate, and I believe that we can take care of this amongst us.
Okay.
Well, I know that, that attends, and, again, I mean, we're, we're looking at an attempt right here.
I, I feel like, um, what I felt like many, many years ago when I was raising children, and they would fight over a toy. Unfortunately, that's kind of how I feel in this situation, and my solution never was very happy with my two children, because I would always remove the toy. And they both lost. And honestly, that's kind of how I feel right now, um, and I would actually move that if this cannot be resolved happy in fourteen days, that the money comes back to the city, and then the marketing group can request the money directly from the city, as was the previous method of getting monies.
And I would second that.
It's been moved in seconded in regards to the monies. Nita, would you please repeat that?
Okay. We move that if this cannot be resolved within fourteen days, that the money that was given to the chamber come back to the city, and the Tourism Marketing Board would then have to present to the city the request for funds. Yay!
Is there any more discussion?
Um, Councilor Locke?
Aye. Oh, so, you know what? I think, I think that since I'm the chamber liaison, that I should recuse myself.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries as stated, with a recusal vote from Councilor Locke.
I think this is really good program, and it's a good way to, I mean, even as adults, yes, we all, my kids are my challenge too, but as adults, miscommunication can happen. And, and it's just simple little things. So, I think we're all on the right track for good things, so. I would personally ask that you fine folks get it all taken care of. I mean, you are senior adults, so.
Thank you.
What does that mean? Can't help myself, can't help it. It's all out of respect, people. Water restrictions, Mr. Vance?
Good evening, council. Tonight I have in front of you, um, a presentation on Montevista's watering restrictions. As, this is the same that you guys have seen for the last couple of years. As part of our water management plan, we've made a commitment to try to reduce our water usage throughout the city. And part of that is to be proactively smart in the use of our irrigation water and also asking our citizens to do the same. So, what you'll be seeing in the resolution section of tonight's council agenda is, uh, twenty-twenty-one watering restrictions. These are the exact same as what we've done in years past, um, so I'll just read it. We are in a level-one mild drought condition, effective May third, twenty-twenty-one through October sixteenth of twenty-twenty-one. All residential and commercial customers that are tapped into the city of Montevista's water supply, for the purpose of watering lawns and grounds shall be restricted to every other day irrigation. Residences with even-numbered street addresses ending in zero, two, four, six, or eight shall water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And residences with odd-numbered street addresses ending in one, three, five, seven, or nine shall water on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Watering in such days shall be limited to the hours of twelve A M. to ten A M., and from six P M. to twelve A M. Sundays will be considered a watering day for all residences during those limited watering hours mentioned above. Outdoor landscape watering shall only be allowed by handheld water hose with attached positive shut-off nozzles, drip irrigation systems, or bucket on any day or at any time for the use of watering trees, shrubs, planting beds, planters, and gardens. Also, number two, newly seeded or sotted lawns will be exempt from these restrictions for a time period needed to establish the lawn, which time period shall not exceed thirty days. Newly seeded or sotted means that an area that, that visibly lacks vegetation, watering shall be restricted to an area that covers newly seeded or sotted portions of the lawn without extending unnecessarily to the areas of established vegetation. Newly seeded or sotted lawns and newly planted trees and shrubs shall be exempt from the odd-even watering scheme, but are not exempt from the hours when the watering is permitted. All of our customers planting new seeded or sot, sotted, wow, excuse me, sotted lawns shall fill out an application at the city of Montevista Public Works Department in order to be allowed thirty days of watering during the restricted hours. From this period, all lawns shall be considered established and must follow in the watering restrictions outlined above. Our goal for this year is a ten percent water reduction in our total pumping demands. So, in your packet is also the exemption application, which will again be posted online and on our website. So, any customer of ours that has a garden, or more specifically, has, wants to establish a new yard, they have the means to go ahead and do that during these restrictions. These are not, these, I, I won't say they're voluntary, but they're our best case to try to get people to promote conscious water conservation. So, we are hoping that, um, this, that later on tonight, the council will be willing to approve that. Any questions?
Can you just repeat those times for me real quick?
Sure.
Six A M. to ten?
So, it's from, um, twelve A M. to?
Ten A M.
Ten, no, yeah, it's ten A M., sorry, yes, and then six to midnight.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so it's, and the, and the idea of not watering between ten A M. and six P M. is, it's the hottest part of the day, most of the water that you actually put in your grass is going to evaporation, so you're actually not doing your, your yard any good, you're just wasting water. Okay?
I think that's a really good idea, again, I think we've saved water in the past.
We have.
By doing this, but especially a year like this year?
Well, and, and we are an agricultural-based community, um, and water is precious, and, and, you know, we have spent thousands of dollars trying to make sure that our armpit action and stuff is right, and we need to really be and really promote with our citizens the best use of what water we have been.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, we are moving on to citizen comments. City council rep, welcome your unscheduled comments. Please limit to, comments to three minutes, council will not take action at this same Yes, sir? Please sign that sheet up there.
Ken Hancock, I just wanted to mention that we've had like our fifty-ninth meeting to, to plan the Cinco de Mayo party, um, which, um, believe it or not, is on May fifth. We've had people ask us, when is it? But it's, it is on May fifth. It is coming along very well, um, we've, we've got some, some cars involved, which is nice. What do we have, seventy-two downloads of the application? Hopefully, seventy-two cars don't show up, but, you know, whatever.
Maybe they, maybe they will.
Uh, but, um, so, the, the plan is, as you all, I, I should know or do know, that we're closing off, um, Adam Street, um, both from one sixty up to Third, um, having food booths, uh, vendors, music, um, kids, kids games, things like that, um, and a car show. And I just wanted to bring that up again to council, that that's gonna happen, um, it is happening, it's gonna be a lot of fun, so.
Are you still having the parade too? Are you still having the parade as well?
Oh, yes, yeah, six o'clock, uh, the parade starts with, uh, anybody that wants to get into the parade, both the cars and any other entries in the parade, so. But it seems to be moving along great, so, we're happy. Thank you, council.
What? No, no.
Sounds like fun. It starts at six, you said?
Yeah, it starts at, in the morning, it starts at eleven and goes to eight.
The parade is at six there.
Yeah, the parade is at six. And, by the way, that's being organized by the Optimistic Citizens Action Network. So, little, little different group there.
Very good. Sounds like a fun day.
Be hungry.
All good food.
You gotta call in sick though.
That ain't happening, brother. Anybody else? It's really funny that people don't keep eye contact with me anymore when I ask that. Okay. We'll move to resolutions. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero seven, establishing watering restrictions on sprinkler systems and lawn irrigation.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Put in order of the resolution. Actually, uh, item, or article number two of the resolution is not correctly stated. Uh, it says the restrictions will be that odd-numbered addresses can water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and even-numbered addresses can water on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday of each week. No watering shall take place on Monday. However, what was presented to the council and what we did last year is that, um, that should be amended to read that the restrictions will be that odd-numbered addresses can water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday of each week, and even-numbered addresses can water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of each week. of each week, and even-numbered addresses can water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of each week. And Sunday is free-for-all watering day within the timeline, within the timelines as established.
Yes.
Sorry.
Nope, that was my fault, thank you.
Does, so Sunday, anybody can water?
Anyone can water.
Within the restricted timelines, yes. We don't wanna, I think two years ago we had an issue with the day, so we don't wanna go there again.
And the addresses.
Yeah, the addresses.
So, I apologize, council. Thank you for finding that. So anyways, tonight, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh seven is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montavista establishing watering restrictions on sprinkler systems and lawn irrigation. Reading, whereas the City of Montavista Municipal Code, Section ten-three dash one-four-zero, sprinkling restrictions allows City Council to establish restrictions for the use of water for irrigation and sprinkling purposes, and whereas the City Council finds that resolution three dash two thousand nineteen should be renewed to continue in twenty twenty-one, and whereas the City Council desires to establish watering restrictions and desires said restrictions to be as simple as possible to enact for residents and as difficult as possible for the public works director, that now therefore let it be resolved that City Council of the City of Montavista, one, deems it necessary to place restrictions on water for the use of irrigation and/or sprinkling, and, two, the restrictions will be that odd-numbered addresses can water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday of each week, and even-numbered addresses can water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and all residents may water during those hours of watering on Sundays of each week. No watering. I'll strike that from there as well. And, three, the duration of the restrictions shall be enforced from May third, twenty twenty-one, through October sixteenth of twenty twenty-one, and authorizes Forest Newerberg, Montavista City Manager, to enforce said restrictions as per the code. Done and signed this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash seven, establishing water restrictions on sprinkler systems and lawn irrigation, as amended.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution two zero two-one dash zero seven. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sibbala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh seven, establishing water restrictions on sprinkler systems and lawn irrigation.
Thank you, and I will make those corrections now, thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Okay, contracts, agreements, and leases. Chamber lease. Who's gonna have that one?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was asking, the chamber lease was current. I was like, the chamber lease? So I asked our clerk to research that for me, and it looks like the last time it was re-signed. It's an annual, it's an annualized lease that requires signatures every year. And the last known signature of that was in twenty thirteen. So, and when I was asked the question, I was like, chamber lease? I don't remember ever doing one of the last few years I was here. So, that didn't happen. So, I would assume that we would look at the lease for, you know, the current world. I think a few things have changed since it was written, but that we'd re-present it to the council at the next meeting.
Do you need a motion to do that?
No, I think it was more informational, like, it's one of those things you go, hmm.
Do you have a lease on Larry's building that we need to renew?
Just. We're not there anymore. We moved?
Did you? Yeah, I love that.
Are you First Christian? It's what, yeah, First Christian shared the building with us now, so we're awesome, we're First Christian.
City manager report. Threw you off on that one, didn't it?
My shop, I own my shop.
Gotta have a little fun.
Evening, mayor, councillors, this will be incredibly brief, there's a lot of words on this report. Great fun, some of which you all saw before, but part of it was for the public certification. I did put a link in here from Upper rear Grand Economic Developments meeting from last week, which we had problems showing the video on Zoom, which apparently can be catastrophic if you try it. But I just think if y'all get a chance to watch that video, it's really cool because it involves a local partnership between Valley Hemp and the Patagonia Company. And if what they're trying to do, which is coming up with a fancier way to process the hemp, so that Patagonia Company will use it. That Formation Ag will be involved in that as well, and if the processing works right, they were trying to modify some Formation Ag machinery. If that all works out right, it'll mean more business for both Valley Hemp and Foundation Ag, which could be fairly significant. So, it's a great video, actually, to watch, really well done. The other thing I wanted to highlight in my report was the joint downtown cleanup partnership that was established. This is really cool. Shawn Davis, who's president of RG Bank, had reached out to us in the school district and said, well, is there an opportunity for citizens' clubs, or, sorry, students' clubs to help keep the downtown clean? And of course, our public works department does a good job on that, but there's a good job and then there's extra credit work. And so we met with the school district and Rob Vance and myself and Shawn, and we kind of just hashed it all out, and so starting on Pirate Pride Day, a number of clubs from the high school will start doing some cleanup work. And we're gonna provide some logistical support, but it's kind of a neat thing. So they'll work in the alleys, along the curbs, things which we do on the city on a fairly regular basis in the summer, but depending on how busy things are. Now, this will also help with our weed management program that we're kicking off, and I think you'll hear more about that at our next meeting. Anyway, it was just really cool because, you know, the bank actually created an opportunity for kids to be involved with the community downtown, and it'll help some downtown, so I was really excited about that. Other than that, if you have any questions about my report, I'd be happy to answer, but I think things are going along pretty well.
Where are we in the process of getting applications or interviewees for the economic development?
Well, I sent out probably a dozen of them. The deadline is the nineteenth. And if it works like most of these things, we've received one response that I actually have in hand. So, we'll see what we come up with Monday.
Thank you.
So you reported on the Sky High Team Meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that cement was poured this morning because they had Sherman Avenue blocked off, and I've never seen so many blessed vehicles sitting over there, other than Stampede. I was trying to figure out if we were already having a dance. I assumed concrete trucks, because there was like eight of them sitting over there.
Right.
So the floor has been poured?
Just four hundred and seventy-five yards, that's it.
That's all?
Yeah, they started at, I think it was a little before four o'clock this morning, and they were having trucks, they were loading from the Alamosa plant and the Montavista plant, but just constant. And so by nine o'clock, I think I told Gary, they already had three hundred and seventy-five yards of cement poured. Oh, concrete, I mean, yeah. I'd be in trouble if I did, yeah.
So, yeah, that's kind of going along well, and actually, just to augment that, since we're talking about floors, so I'm working on the RFP for the gym floors, if you will, or the sports floors. Recontacted a couple of vendors who contacted us before, and should have that RFP out shortly. You know, one of the challenges there was timing, because when you get that, it's gotta have a place to go and a place to be stored. So, you know, we're looking at the installation date in September, which both contractors I talked to today were like, okay, yeah, we could do that. So, a couple of pretty exciting products that we're looking at, but we are still looking at the replays, or the floors, which are gonna be taken up. So that when we have big events like Stampede, we won't be walking over the basketball, volleyball, multipurpose flooring. So that's still on there, it's not inexpensive, none of them are expensive, fixed, poured, whatever, unless you want a really low-grade rubberized surface, which doesn't really befit the building or what we're trying to do with it. So, that RFP, I'll probably put that out next week, and, you know, that's being paid for with one cent tax funds, as appropriated by the voters. So we'll have a meeting of the one cent tax oversight committee, if that right. Once we have the bids in for the RFP, they'll look at them, and then we will make a recommendation to council. We get to look at all the bids as well, and hopefully that process will take place. Look at the dates, the second meeting in May, probably, or the first meeting in June. That's coming along, but now that there's concrete, we can get some stuff to put on there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
It is your turn, sir. You have a big report?
No.
No.
Who struck that?
Says the PD. You didn't give anything to say? You have nothing to say about the chief?
Cameras are rolling.
So you don't have a report for us, then? Ian, I'm really looking forward to it. You? Kristen? It is your turn, young man.
I'm gonna follow suit on this, and I don't have a whole lot to report. Most of what we tend to do, I tend to report a little bit early, if you guys haven't noticed. But I guess the big thing, our updated data centers are a new backup system that seems to work fairly well. Other than that, we've pushed out a couple other computers and just small things, updates, patches, things break, let's come and fix them. We've been fairly understaffed with one of my coworkers being out. He is back in action, doing quite well, so things should be looking up from here. But other than that, I don't have a whole lot to announce.
Very good.
So, yeah, if you guys have questions.
Thank you for keeping our team running smoothly.
Maybe you tried, but it's always a hassle. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Council, committee, city commission, and council reports. Larry, well, let's start with you.
Okay. Three items. One, I took the liberty of calling MDS Waste Management, who said they would love to have a roll-off in addition to the other ones contributed by Waste Management, if they have one available. Right now, they're all checked out, but they said if they get one that comes back, or two, they would love to participate in it. So I told her to keep me posted on that, and hopefully you'll get some extra trash capacity for trash cleanup. Number two, next weekend, shameless PSAs here, sorry. Next weekend, there is a rummage sale between Grace and Mercy Bible Fellowship and First Christian. Many, many people have, in our group, have contributed hundreds of items. The unique thing about this is you will not find any prices on them, it is whatever you feel you want to donate. Proceeds will go to the mission trip to Thailand. Later this year, that is Friday from eight to four, and Saturday from eight to noon over at First Christian. And tomorrow night, everybody should go eat out. Pipley's Authentic Italian will open tomorrow night. They are, will be open tomorrow from five to nine, and then Saturday, two to nine. They are sharing the space with Fernandez Taqueria, taqueria, I never can pronounce that correctly, as they kind of get a feel for the market and feel for what they need to offer. And if everything goes well for them, they will look for a more permanent home. And that, as I said, that is tomorrow night, five to nine, and Saturday, two to nine. And that's all I got?
Did you say that was again?
It's Pipley's Authentic Italian Food, and I happen to have been a guinea pig taster for some of their stuff, and so far, it's been all excellent.
I just, I don't have much, I just want to give the citizens of Montavista kudos for everything that they do. We just, this is the city, you know, there's a whole bunch of people out there. It's starting to warm up out there. We need to look out for each other continuously, like, all the time, because there's always people up to no good. The police department, the police department for everything that they do. It's just, I'm excited for the summertime, you know, things are, things are looking up. We're optimistic about change in Montavista, you know, and it's happening, you know, it's happening. I'm a big believer in speaking positive positivity into my children, into the city, into anybody that I talk to, really, you know? So, speak positive, be positive, our city will get there. So it's on its way, so this is gonna be the hotspot of the valley soon, you know? Because a lot of people, like Alamosa, because it's bigger, but with Optimists around and the marketing team and the chamber, everybody together, I believe that we can really make this happen, you know, make it a hotspot for the valley. So, I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Martha?
Um, I think, well, I usually give a chamber report here, but I think we've done that, so I'm gonna skip over that. The theater board had a meeting, and they are well on their way to getting all their Bible one, C, three done, stuff. And so, and they are going to, they're hoping to participate in the Cinco de Mayo celebration. They are planning on being open for concessions, but they're hoping to find a movie appropriate for that day, especially if it can be culturally educational, so to, to actually dispel some misconceptions that we as Americans have about Cinco de Mayo. So, the whole event is a cultural experience, and I'm very happy to have the Valley Theater, at least attempting to find a movie that they can play that would be educational, maybe as a matinee, maybe a matinee in the evening. That's still in the planning stages. The Cinco de Mayo, which I think Ken covered, is coming along very well. I don't know the numbers of the vendors, I don't know the numbers of the cars. I know that the phone rings constantly with, with inquiries, and I know that lots of forms have been downloaded, not just looked at, but actually downloaded. Usually when people go to the trouble of actually downloading a form, they intend to fill it out and send it in. So that's going very well, the marketing for that's going very well, that group is actually growing. They've added two or three more people to the group here just recently. So that's going on, I'm excited about the summer, too, because, and I noticed that the Potato Festival was announced, OMA, online, so I'm excited.
Stampede was announced?
Yeah, Stampede was announced, Potato Festival, Cinco de Mayo, you know, I just don't, I don't, I'm not sure how we're gonna keep up with everything that is going on, but I expect to see Montavista turning out for these events and, and having a good, and I think that they will, because it's gonna be a lot of fun. And goodness knows, after the year we And goodness knows, after the year we've had, I understand the state wants us to stay careful, the C D P H E wants us to stay careful, and we can do that, but we can have fun while we do that, too. And we need that. We need some money to walk down the hallway. That's all I got. That and mine, no, I'll let you say Money Strong, that's true. I'd just like to agree with it, because I'm just gonna go ahead and pre-agree.
Well, I really don't have too much, other than this time of year, while we're out traveling around, seeing the countryside. Please be careful, these dust storms are horrible. And we need to really pay attention, especially if any of law enforcement have people pulled off side of the road to watch. I heard of an incident, this was not here, this was in Arizona. There was a big dust storm. Vehicle rear-ended, a small car ended up being a five-car accident, no major injuries. A border patrolman pulled up on the accident, got out, started checking everybody, and some person went by and hit him and killed him. So. It's important to pay attention. I got guys out on the road, in the fields, semis running up and down the road, and when you can't see the one of the semi, then it's bad, which you can't stop, because then somebody will get you. So, please be safe out there, and that's everybody in the community going to and from work. So, respect each other, and like Victor said, keep an eye out for things, because there are things happening at night. I got new dogs in my neighborhood that bark all the time, so it's time to get out in the alley and start paying attention, I guess, but. So with that being said, everybody be safe, take care of yourselves, in Money Strong.
Oh.
Yeah.
Meeting recessed until...
May sixth.
May sixth.